Please rise when they are pledged to the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all our guests. May I have the member roll call please?
Mr. Taser.
Present.
Mr. Cleary.
Here.
Mr. McKenzie.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Ms. Hopcroft.
Here. First up, we have the approval of the planning commission minutes which were in the packet. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes before we proceed to a vote about them? Okay, hearing no comment, can I have a motion to approve them?
Make the motion to approve the planning commission minutes from April second, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Cleary, support by Mr. O'Connor, any further discussion? All in vague, oh, sorry, roll call.
Mr. Cleary.
Yes.
Mr. Taser.
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Hopcroft.
Yes. Next, we take a look at the agenda to see if anybody has any additions, corrections, no ultimately approval. Anyone on the commission have any issues? I will accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Okay, I'll make that a motion too, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
That's okay, motion by Hopcroft, support by O'Connor. A roll call please.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie.
Yes.
Mr. Cleary.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Taser.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now we, uh, public comment. This is how we're set up for non-scheduled and scheduled agenda items. I think at some point we're gonna break that out into the two. But um, our agenda reads today, either one. So, who would like to speak? Okay, um, are you sure? Alright, hearing no, um...
Are you looking for a pause? I can make something off.
Looking for engagement, but we're good. Okay, so let's move on to new business, and first up is um, we're, uh, a letter from Mr. Iaconjelli concerning case two oh four of twenty twenty-four, and I'll just go ahead and summarize that. Mr. Buckner, if that's alright with you? So what, what is, uh, everyone remembers that we gave approval on this case already, but it came to the attention of the township after that approval, that there's more than one ownership configuration in the parcels that we required to be um, always kept together. So, the proposal came from our planner, Mr. Iaconjelli, to, rather than, we had required that the um, applicant combined parcels nine and twelve, but they are owned by different persons or entities. So we have had to, we have to um, reconfigure that to make it consistent, and the proposal he made was for parcels nine and ten to be required, be required to be combined, so we won't have a standalone, what would, would have been an accessory dwelling, not a dwelling, but an accessory building. So he's recommending, rather than nine and twelve, it being, it would be nine and ten. So I threw, throw that out to the commission, if, uh, does anyone have any further explanatory notes on that?
I believe it was recommendation by this commission, nine, ten, and twelve.
Oh, nine, ten, and twelve, okay.
Nine and ten were combined some years ago. Okay, but I know that we had said nine, ten, and twelve were probably well.
Right. I have concerns.
Go ahead.
Originally, I made that motion, um, uh, my concerns from the very beginning in this case has been that the property, if the property is sold off separately, would create a non-conforming property because it's in a zoning. Um, and even though it's an accessory structure, it faces a primary road. So, I, you know, um, the only thing that the nine and ten does is allow parking for an accessory structure. It doesn't follow, it still doesn't follow our zoning. So, I don't know what we can do about, about that, I, um, if, if it, if it is sold off later, it's, we're creating a non-conforming property in the heart of our downtown. So, I don't know if it's possible to put some kind of restriction on that, or have it become, the facing part of that should become conforming. That means the glass and the, and the door entrance and, um, and the, and the, the bottom part of that would make it conforming for that, for that zoning. I'm not comfortable having a, having something that could create a, a non-conforming use in the, in the future, you know, that's not what we're supposed to be doing here. So, I don't know what the solution is to this.
We could toss it back to the applicant and ask the applicant to propose something that would sort it out, because they knew about that difference in ownership.
The reason why we wanted to combine it was because then it would become an accessory structure to the prim, primary building, but this case it's not.
Right.
There's separate ownerships there then, there's an added ownership on the, on the property, so, uh, you know, I'm, I, I would rather, I would, I would be opposed to approving making a non-conforming building.
Any other comments? Still a comment?
Yeah, I'm just reading, uh, Mr. Iaconjelli's letter again, and uh, looking at his suggestions. I don't know that, I, I have to agree with Mr. Taser on this. I don't know where it's, our suggestions or recommendations for what they should do, I think that we should, I, I recommend that we return it to the applicant and come back to us with something that will, that will fit better. Um, and they can go ahead and sit down with Mr. Buckner and, and take it from there.
Anybody else have any additional suggestions or comments? Would you like to put that in form of a motion? Oh, Mr. Cleary?
I don't have the map with me, so.
Do you want this?
Yes.
While he's looking, Mr. Anderson, did you have a comment?
Um, I heard Mr. Taser on the stage.
Okay, and Ms., Ms. McKenzie, did you have a comment? Okay.
So this goes like this, you know?
Before, if you combine them, it would make this all a property, which then this would be an accessory structure.
Right, originally, we had twelve as the primary, and twelve was conforming. And nine, I think is the accessory.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. O'Connor, did you want to put that in form of a motion?
Sure, I, uh, I would like to make a motion, a recommendation, that we return this application to the client, the, the, um,
Applicant?
Applicant for further review to meet zoning requirements. Let me get that.
Okay, um, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by O'Connor, second by Cleary, to return the, the, um, to return this issue to the applicant to, for them to come up with a, um, a solution, so that it conforms with zoning. And, any further discussion? A roll call please.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Taser?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Hopcroft?
Yes.
Motion carries.
No, motion carries. Okay, next up is the site plan review. Of the whispering. I didn't say it wrong, um... Are you here to present?
I am here as our representative, yes. Uh, our architect is actually calling in, but he's having trouble getting into the zoom call.
Oh, okay. Do you have him, Mr. Buckner? Do you have him in the zoom?
He's not on yet.
Okay.
He needs a passcode. He needs the link, he may have passed code yet.
So, Mr. Buckner, not to give you too much to do, but can you give us the setup from the, um, township perspective, and then the applicant representative can take over and provide more content? Is that this? Are you prepared to do that, or?
I'm trying to skip it.
I'm sorry, I know, doing the zoom, doing everything, it's not fair.
Is he the meeting ID number?
He had the link that gets him into the meeting, but he said he needs a passcode, he asked for a passcode, he can't access it.
Want me to read the narrative?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
I have a narrative.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Alright. Woodland Whispers, site plan narrative. Woodland Whispers have proposed sixteen unit multifamily development on Skoda Township located at uh, forty-two thirty-eight, forty-two forty-two, and forty-two fifty-six California Street. The site is located in the W three, W, WR three zoning district, and there are currently three apartment buildings that are planned to be replaced. These parcels, all owned by Art, Art and Zia Cruz, are intended to be combined into a single property. The proposed development would increase the density and quality of the housing available for workers in the former Worxmith Air Force Base area, similar to other properties being developed in the area. Uh, proposed buildings would include duplexes and quadplexes. New driveway sidewalks and off-street parking will be built to serve the development. In addition, each unit will include a one-car garage. Driveways are planned along both California Street and Perimeter Road frontages. California Street will generally conform to the existing conditions of the off-street parking for the existing apartment buildings on-site. Perimeter Road driveways are proposed to provide access to the subject property from both sides, similar to the northern adjacent properties at forty-two thirty-nine California Street. The buildings will be served by public water and sewer via connections to the existing mains that currently serve the existing apartments. A detention basin is to be constructed to account for increased runoff from the property as a result of construction, with the outlet connecting to the existing public storm sewer. On-site soils are generally loamy sand, and there are no existing wetlands or flood plain, um, concerns for this site. There are several mature, dis, severe trees throughout the site that will need to be removed to facilitate new construction in a small hill in the northern portion of the site that will need to be cut into. There are existing sanitary, uh, sewer facilities on-site that were identified by the topographic survey and the monitoring, as monitoring wells. Uh, no record of such wells have been found, but nonetheless, disturbance of these structures is to be avoided. Typical measures of dust control, vibration, light sound, and soil erosion are to be undertaken during construction, and are usually, um, and necessary permits are to be acquired from the appropriate authorities.
Thank you. What, and what is your name, please?
My name is Gary Ray with F E D Corporation.
Gary Ray, how do you spell Ray?
R E A.
With F E D.
Yes.
And you are?
We are the construction manager for the Cruises.
Okay, thank you very much. Can you, um, can you pick it up from there and add some more content?
I certainly can. So, last month, we came and did a preliminary overview with the team, and answered questions that you may have, and since our design partner has gone forward and addressed the comments that were issued by your team, um, and in the new package that was submitted to Fred two and a half weeks ago, plus or minus, uh, we have provided the detention volume requirement for the site, based on the new calculations of the impact to the three parcels. I will caveat that the three parcels have been combined, there's confirmation of that from the Cruises, and then there is a quick plan deed also done on the property. So both of those. Uh, Fred, I don't know if I forwarded you the quick plan deed or not yet, would you need a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay, I will forward that to you yet tonight. So that is a eleven by seventeen draw, or sketch that does the detention volume required, and that was a request per the comments that we received back. The package has a civil package, which is a topo, topographical survey of the site, to let us know what we're dealing with. Topo-wise of your existing site, and then the three structures that are placed on that site. It also has all the utility structures and all the utility, um, systems that are on the property today. There are two wells that were on the property, those were for PPOS, and Art has confirmed with Worxmith that those are no longer utilized and abandoned. So in the package, we will have a appropriate, per requirements, closing, filling, and abandoning those permanently in the project. Next page is C one oh one, which is our site plan. One deviation from the previous comment was we were on the path of quadplexes and duplexes. We actually, on the perimeter road-facing, uh, area, we are on a six-plex on that one.
Okay.
There are two duplexes, or quadplexes on California, and one duplex now for the six-plex. The parking that was required and to conform to the current off, or off-road parking that you have, is a small parking lot inborn into the property, and that has been redesigned with this new layout of these, well, for the building plans. Sidewalks were added per the comments that were given, and those sidewalks are California Street-facing and also Perimeter Road-facing, and they all interconnect. Stormwater detention is roughly in the south-west, central of the site, between the six-plex and the duplex unit. Um, and that is per the calculations that were done. Setbacks have all been calculated and managed to meet, make sure they're hitting the requirements. There is a preliminary landscape plan that was issued, and this is just for reference and for understanding what could happen on the site to support landscaping needs and buffer zones and meet compliance of zoning. The drawing conceptual floor plan is still a single unit. Uh, even though we're doing quadplexes, duplexes, and six-plexes, it's a mirrored unit when you look at this. Uh, I think one of the comments was, we'd like to see a quadplex, um, in the rendering and also the floor plan. Our team is willing and able to put that together for us. Uh, it's not done in this package, but we're hoping that we can get a agreement to approve, knowing that will be coming. And then the last page is the elevations and comments, the last time that we, uh, discussed, this looks like we had complied with, and were on track with color scheme and, um, aesthetics of the exterior. Any questions?
Yes, uh, Mr. Taser, would you like to start?
Yeah, um, one thing, I guess it's more of a question for Rick, um, were these plans shown to the fire chief for emergency?
Yeah, they were. And please.
Yeah, and they, they, they were good, they were good from that. If, sometimes when, um, when they do that, could you have them put something in writing for us?
They're, they're hard to do.
Yeah, 'cause I know it's hard to do that. Um, um, yeah, uh, I, I, I re, I went in and reviewed those plans, and I, and I thought they were fitting all of our standards, and, um, the only questions that would come up is, of course, we want it to look really nice, the landscaping is going to be something that we would really like to see done, you know, uh, one of the comments from Mr. Iaconjelli was, uh, possibly moving the sidewalk push to the, uh, right-of-way lines to enter more of a green space, so we could have more of a tree line there. Something for you to look at, um, you know, this isn't a mandatory thing, this is, this would be a suggestion, because this is a principle use. Um, um, the, the, uh, I, I liked it, uh, I, I think it's a good design, I, I, I don't know what color schemes you're gonna go with on these buildings, I was, I would hope that they would be, not barrack-like, uh, if you get my drift, I would like to see some colors and, and, um, something that's very pleasant for the, uh, community. Other than that, that's my comments.
Mr. Cleary? Are you ready?
No, I, I gotta agree with Mr. Taser, so.
Mr. Anderson?
I'm good, I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. O'Connor?
Yes. Uh, having done a lot of construction on bases throughout the country, the replacement rate of trees is two or three to one, depending on the size of them. I see you've got twenty-four going in, I'm assuming you're taking out a lot less than twelve?
I'd have to verify that, but our team looked at the code.
Yeah, and I do like the way that they're placed, they seem to be in good spots, and I, I do realize we're not gonna get a hundred-year-old tree replaced, but, uh, as long as we're making sure that we have a, a good ratio out there, and obviously, it's not a government property anymore shy of, uh, the, the people that own it, but, uh, we do wanna see a good replacement rate on the trees. I do have, uh, uh, a, a criticism that, uh, Mr. Taser brought up about the green space and the sidewalks being moved closer or farther into the buildings. That makes it...
Other way, what are you saying, the other way, toward the right-of-way?
Towards the right-of-way from front of it.
Like, do you see this on Iaconjelli's report?
Okay, let's forget this language for a second.
Okay.
Let me go to the part where the print that I saw in Mr. Buckner's office showed twenty feet between the sidewalk and the front of the garage. And I would think that we at least want a minimum of that, because we all know what happens to garages, especially when you only have one, and you have two bedrooms. The car is probably the last thing to go in there, and there may be two cars there to begin with, but what I, where I'm going is, is I certainly like to see that somebody could walk down the sidewalk without having to walk around somebody's vehicle that's sticking into the sidewalk, and we all know it's gonna happen, but if we at least give them a minimum spot where they can pull the car far enough up there that, that we would make that, so if I'm misunderstanding...
No, that's closer to the right-of-way is what you're saying.
I think it matches what the reference is.
Thank you.
Right.
I was, I know I saw a right-of-way line, and it was closer to the house, and I thought, ah, I don't want that one. Um, outside of, uh, I, I sure go along with the landscaping, and, uh, and if we could make sure we, we keep that, that that would be good. Um, one other thing that, uh, we kinda talked about at the very first, uh, preliminary, uh, the, uh, conceptual meeting was, uh, I had asked about garbage and garbage pickup. And it was brought up that, well, I can't tell people what garbage company to use. On the other hand, we have enough problems with garbage and garbage cans and whatnot, and I brought up the fact that, well, now you're gonna have five different days or sixteen different days that people are gonna have trucks coming up and down the street. They are apartments and they are rentals, correct?
Correct.
So we could just have the fee for the garbage, which I don't think is that much per month, in there, they'd be given, you know, you could have a company bid on it and say, hey, we've got sixteen units out here, and that way, they'd all come on one day, all those green, brown, pink, whatever color containers would then be placed back away and, and be done, if we could take a look into that. I don't think it'd be that detrimental to the cost of rent, because now you're including another service with it, but...
I'll mention it to Cruises, that's up to them.
I, understood, understood, I just thought that it, you know, it, it just helps clean up the neighborhood.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you being here.
My pleasure.
Okay, I have a, a few questions, um, so you're intending to put in the trees that are shown on your, on your plan?
Utilizing this as the baseline of where we're gonna start, it could add to, and certainly, if it goes less, then it still has to conform with the ratio requirements.
Okay, and then what about in the front, so, Mr. Iaconjelli had that, did you see a copy of his, his figure where he's suggesting that there's a little private landscape area where there's some...
At the frontage of the property, or at the, at the, yeah. And as you can see, there's a few placed on the landscape plan on California Street. Um, just not at every one of them. So, we can certainly take some from the back area and move those up towards the front, if that's the, the desire.
Well, the desire is to have even more, that, to keep the ones that are in the back and then have some in the front as well. So it's, um, more of a friendly, and, uh, um, to get away from the look, we are on a former airbase, but we don't wanna continue that look of the stark airbase, and this is an opportunity to get the, the friendliness and the environmental beauty in there from the ground floor, and then they'll presumably be the kind of trees that can take care of themselves. So, um, Mr. Iaconjelli is suggesting that public terrace area, so there's a private landscape area close to the house, then there's the sidewalk, and then there's a public terrace area where, and the public terrace, there would be some larger trees, like, one every forty feet, so that's not so many, what is that, like, four or five?
Probably across the thunder's there.
Yeah, does that sound right, like, four or five? And then, some of the mini, uh, maybe mini trees or shrubs, then closer to the building, so if each of the townhouses had some kind of landscaping to get away from the starkness, we really don't want the starkness, we want this to be a marvelous improvement to the area, one that we can all be proud of.
Sure.
I have one more question.
Okay, I'll come out.
But, just, I, it's only about the timelines, I didn't mention the timelines for the construction on this.
So timeline-wise, we need to move into design next, as we get through this approval, and our goal is to still break, do our best to break ground yet in the fall this year.
Thank you, Mr. Taser. The, um, the drainage pool, I think you called it det, a detention?
Detention pond.
Detention. What, um, I may be totally ignorant about this, but how is that not a hazard to children?
So, number one, it's not that gradient to where you have a problem, it's collecting water and detaining it so that it will have a slower runoff to, um, the storm system that it goes to. It's not a pond that sits there full all the time, it's just more of a collection, detention for a period of time, and slow release into the storm system.
Hey Fred, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, just a question of the, the detention pond, it has out flat control structure. Um, the side slopes are four-on-one side slopes, so typically, you know, for ponds that have steeper side slopes, that's where some of the safety issues come in, and a fence sometimes may be required for steeper side slopes, but we're using a gradual four-on-one, or one-on-four side slopes, and, um, yeah, we're not expecting it to hold water for permanent long periods of time, it would just, uh, temporarily detain water and then slowly release it, but it won't have standing water for, you know, it's not gonna have permanent standing water, it would just be after large rain events. Um, where there, it would just take some time to infiltrate back into the soil.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. O'Connor, go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm clear, because I heard two different words used. Okay, so I'm clear, because I heard two different words used. I've heard one used the most, which is detention, but I also heard retention. Now, I understand the difference. It is not a retention pond, correct? It is a detention pond.
That's what's labeled as.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you did mention the monitoring wells that were set up to handle PFAS, and I couldn't quite understand what you were saying, that you intend to get a permit to have those removed?
They will be abandoned and they will follow the Michigan rule R three twenty-five dot one six six two dash three twenty-five dot one six six nine, so that's a state rule that will conform to the abandonment of those.
Okay, and has um, have you been in or has Mr. Cruz been in communication with the RAB, the uh, do you know what that is?
I do, I do not know if you have the dot.
But how do you know that they've been abandoned?
He has communicated with Lord Smith directly. And I'm assuming that's who he probably talked to.
I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had some documentation of that communication and verification by anybody who might have a um, an interest in it, because we don't wanna.
The email trail does show confirmation of that, so we will forward that.
Will you share that with Mr. Buckner?
Absolutely.
And also the regulations that you referred to?
Yes, will do.
So Mr. Tasure raised the issue of the colors, do you have a plan for your palette? Is are you in um? Can you describe your palette?
Eric, I'll let you take that one, please.
Yeah, so I mean, it'd be similar to the general character of the building elevation that was submitted with the architectural super roof and like a darker brown and then the boarding batten, smart side siding and like that cream-ish color with white um smart side trim. Um, so that that is the general, you know, aesthetic um and appearance that that we're going for.
So are you saying like natural woodland colors? Would be the palette, nothing like in a hot pink or a hot orange?
No, more earth tones, yeah, browns, the lighter tange uh siding, white trim. No, um, you know, extravagant colors or no you know, pretty uh um just earth tones and nothing that's real eccentric.
Okay, and I thought I saw green in some of your renderings, is that my memory?
That's the windows.
Oh, that's one that I heard.
Not that the windows would be green, that's just the tint that's drawn in this drawing for contrast.
Windows are too really hard to put on planes.
There.
Right, yeah, of course. Then uh Mr. Iaconcelli had mentioned something about the continuity of the facade so that that we don't wanna have a monotone wall, like it's a uh uh, it's not very descriptive, like it's a warehouse or something, what is your, how is your, what's your intention to make that not be a um a a monotonous wall, is that perhaps a question for us?
So, I'll comment a little bit, but I'll have Eric comment further. The garages are re- are out in front of and then they mirror each other, so you will never have a flat plane along all of the quadplexes, sixplexes and duplexes. It's a inset, back in, out, step out. Eric, any other comments?
Yeah, I just, I think I heard what Gary said, but the facade isn't of like a completely flat front, it does have some depth to it. The garage, you know, sticks out approximately ten feet or or so from the front door, has a a front porch. Um, so it it's not just gonna be like a monotonous front flat facade, there'll be some variation and some depth with the garage and the front doors being on different planes, if you will.
Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Mr. O'Connor?
Yes, um could we get a quick definition of smart side trim and smart side siding, what is the material and uh whatnot?
It's more like a composite siding that has, you know, more sustainable uh manufacturing uh type inputs, um low maintenance. Uh, it's a little bit higher architectural grade than just like vinyl siding.
So it's not a cementous siding?
Uh, I'd have to double-check on that with my architects, but uh my my understanding is it's um, you know, it's a higher quality product than vinyl siding.
More of a composite style siding, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm I'm having nightmares of Louisiana Pacific and some of these other, I know you're giggling about it, the the rest of this room may not know that much about it, but we sure don't wanna get into one of those situations. Thank you, thank you.
Is it more like hardy board?
Yeah.
Well, hardy board would be cementous.
Is it pretty?
James Hardy siding is cementous.
If you notice, a lot of the newer builds, specifically in the higher-end homes, you're seeing a lot of this vertical board and batten.
Okay.
And they're using composite materials for those, because of the durability and longevity of it.
Sure.
And low maintenance.
Any further discussion?
Was there any questions on the landscaping, I just came in, caught the tail end of it, I just wanted to make sure I answered any of those questions that remain unanswered.
Yes, absolutely, Derek, um. The question I raised is, how, are you willing to conform to Mr. Iaconcelli's figure uh calling for a tree every forty feet of a three-foot caliper in the front yard, and then some minor landscaping in front of each of the townhouses in the private space area, so that there's greenery, um uh, not attached, but greenery next to each of the dwellings.
Yeah, I think that's uh an option, we were following the zoning ordinance requirements, um which we understand to be uh the only landscape requirements we found in the zoning ordinance were one tree per two thousand square feet of open space. Um, it it didn't specify, you know, the number of the spacing along the front edge, um so we just uh using that requirement, uh we have forty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-four square feet of open space. So the the number of trees required for the zoning were twenty-four trees. And we were planning to um protect and keep five existing trees and add nineteen proposed trees to meet that total of twenty-four trees required. So those were the only zoning requirements we could find. Um, so that's what we followed.
Great, we we appreciate you following the zoning, and one of the uh, one of the tasks delegated to this commission is to assure that the uh community is aesthetically compatible either with our aspirations for the zoning area or with the existing um districts, so that's why that's why I raised the question about the willingness to incorporate additional landscaping in the front and some small um trees or shrubs in front of each of the townhouses, I'm guessing that's something that Mr. Cruz would need to respond to?
Yes, Mr. Cruz, we will share that with Mr. Cruz and he will weigh in on his willingness to add to.
And do you have an idea of what what kind of money that would add to the to the um project, to have those additional trees, and how many do we think if we do one every forty feet in the front?
I thought we said it was four or five trees.
Four or five trees, so let's say five big trees, like three foot in the trunk, and um and then.
So I'm assuming he's talking about a three-inch caliber, not a three-foot caliber.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, is it three-inch?
Three, yeah. We we would hope to put in three-foot caliber trees, but I don't think it's worked out.
Inch mark.
It's strange along California Street, especially with placing street trees from existing utility complexes.
All right.
Uh overhead electric wires, underground utilities, so, you know, the spacing isn't you know, the one inch equals forty, the one tree over forty feet isn't necessarily achievable when you consider all the utility complexes.
And what about um, so, I would modify my wish to uh conform to the utilities, but still get some trees out front. Um, but can either of you comment on what what the cost might be for the three-inch? Five trees and then the three little shrubs or?
I haven't assessed the cost impacts to that request. So, but a three-inch caliber tree is gonna be thousand or better.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, three-inch caliper trees are a little bigger than typical, normally we specify two-and-a-half inch caliper, which is pretty standard nursery stock. Um, so to get three-inch trees would be, yeah, a little more expensive and a little harder to get, but yeah, I think for that size tree installed, you know, upwards of a thousand dollars a tree.
And if it were two-and-a-half caliper, the more standard, is it like seven fifty, or what are we talking then?
It reduces that cost somewhere in that range, yes, and what we would like to see is trees and or shrubbery that is standard-sized, so not have a special order and pay a premium.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna require non-standard, that's just reflective of my ignorance.
No, that's.
But but we still want the beauty of the um, the vegetation, yeah.
Yeah, two-and-a-half inch tree is a nice sized tree, like I said, pretty typical, when you get into like the the cheap trees, those are like one-inch calipers, you know, planted in a lot of like park projects, because you're planting a bunch of trees and they don't want the additional costs, so like a one-inch caliper tree would be a cheap tree, a two-and-a-half inch tree would be a standard tree, anything above two-and-a-half inch is, you know, kind of um a premium.
Mm-hmm. And do do either of you have a reaction to having three pieces of shrubbery in front of each um each townhouse, one might be a small tree and two others might be shrubs, do you have any reaction to that?
Yeah, I think that's the, you know, to have like a small landscaping bed in the front of the the townhome with um you know, smaller uh shrubs or like a ornamental tree.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I think what would be nice, that's again, not what we found in the zoning ordinance, and it was hard to show on a site plan like this to have that level of detail. Um, you know, we do have lawn areas, uh turf grass, also uh planned for the front yards and and the surrounding, you know, side yards and backyards. Um. So, you know, I think a small landscaping bed near the front porch would help add some of that character.
Mm-hmm, yes, thank you, and do you have an idea on what that might add in cost to the project?
Hmm. Probably a couple thousand dollars per townhome. If you're talking, you know, a group of shrubs, maybe a small ornamental tree, landscape bedding, topsoil, mulch. Um. Just kinda what I would estimate on the fly.
Uh-huh, thank you. So the um my expressed wish is about thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of landscaping. Mr. O'Connor?
Yeah, uh you spoke, uh when we were talking about trees, you spoke about overhead lines. I didn't see, I didn't see any drawings that show overhead utility lines, obviously we don't want trees in the way of that, do we have any overhead utilities?
Yeah, it's a little hard to decipher on the engineering grounds, but there's overhead electric on California. Uh, a lot of the those existing townhomes are served by that overhead electric. Um, it's a symbol, like if you look on the uh site plan um between like the duplex and the off-street parking lot, there's a symbol there uh that says OE, it's got a like a power pole symbol. That's, you know, one of the locations, you can see where there's underground gas mains. Uh, we've got the proposed uh storm lines, proposed water services, and sewer, so you know, all those utilities are on this, they're either existing or being proposed for development.
So on this plan, the OE is the full frontage of California Street.
That's all overhead.
It's all red, yeah. So it comes from the west, straight to the east, gets to the duplex unit to the east of it. Then it jogs back into property between the duplex and the parking, and then runs diagonal across the parking to the other side of California. So yeah, we do have a decent amount of overhead lines right out of that tonnage. So, that can be problematic for your power company, plus, and they may have a desire to have a lower canopy tree in that location.
So even smaller than the two-and-a-half inch?
Well, the caliber doesn't change the height of the tree, it's the selection of the tree of the height of the.
Low canopy.
Yeah.
Mr. Tasure?
Yeah, um, I asked this question before, my my biggest concern also is not listed in the uh in the uh standards for approval, but the timelines. Um, in the past, we've run into issues where we've approved projects like this and and um we didn't hold forth on timelines, what kind of timelines are we looking at for uh this project, is it'll be all uh all a completion date for, or is it gonna be brought in on phases?
This will be a phased project, simply because they have three existing units that are occupied. They will have to vacate one of those units, we'll have a tear down, and then we'll build whatever we can in that space and we build the space adjacent without impeding on the next unit, so that they can maintain that total. And then once we get those built, I believe ours plans to move them into a new space, continue it down through.
That's understood, so the beginning would be this fall, and then as as the new ones are being built and the people are moving in and the old ones are being torn down.
Yes. So the other thing we're doing here too is we're looking to do as much signal construction as we can, which means you're building a lot of things off-site and bringing them on and interacting them quickly.
Okay.
So the erection time of the home should go faster.
Okay. Is there any estimate on that completion?
We have not gotten to those dates yet, simply because we're trying to get through this approval and we gotta get through the design phase next. This design process is gonna be in that four to five-month range plus months.
That's understood. You'll be working with our Rick Freeman on those final construction plans?
Yes, we will.
Any additional questions or discussion? Before we um before we craft our motion, I might recommend that we list the different factors that if we are going to approve the different factors that we're going to include in our motion to make sure that we cover everything. If we can make that list and then we'll craft the motion after that.
We um this is a principal use. So, we are not allowed to put conditions. We'll keep that in mind. But you're not put conditions on as long as it fits the zoning.
Oh, you mean it's just strong suggestions?
I'm making no strong suggestion that we follow our zoning.
Right. Okay, um. Well, I need a minute to check our regs, if that's um, if anything else you can do and answer, I'm glad. Does anyone else wanna make a comment? It's okay, we can look at it.
We have any idea of what those power lines, how how far they go, or or are we the termination of the trying to bury them?
That will be up to the utility.
Yeah, I know, that would be a wonderful thing, wouldn't it?
Um, my guess, and I've driven around um private buildings and they go for a distance, there's no doubt about it, so I don't know if the utility has a plan of conversion to underground or not.
And I've I've driven it also and I just for the life of me, I can't see them, so maybe they were unobtrusive, I, but uh.
Back in the day, they, I didn't.
I know.
It became a problem, but you know.
But we're, you're planning on underground services, correct?
To the home, to the residences.
Right.
Um, ideally, that would be a goal.
Okay. I just, man, oh man, I'd hate to see above overhead entrances on every one of those little guys coming in.
I understand, the challenge you have is utility to weigh in on that as well.
Sure.
Okay, well, I do, I do believe that we, um, we have the authority to require some amount of landscaping. I don't think that there's any appetite for causing the applicant to have a great deal of increased cost. But it does seem to be within our, um, authority and indeed mandate to make sure that our, that the proposal is in conformity with our, um, with the surroundings, including our vision for going forward into the future. And this is gonna be a, um, a flagship and inspiration to other developments, so I'm gonna, um, uh, hold that landscaping.
I, I would highly recommend that we stay within our zoning ordinance for standards for approval.
Okay, I agree with you on that. And I'm gonna refer to standard four, under ten point three, standard four. And number five, so if I'm looking at ten point three standards for approval, uh, numbers four and five in the zoning regs, um, endorse our, our, um, authority, so to say, and our overview of landscaping as appropriate to the area, ten point three, four and five. So that's, um, that any, um, appropriate landscaping will be provided to, um, minimize any adverse effects of the development. And that as many natural landscaping features as possible be retained. And obviously, you have to take down some trees, so we want to keep the, uh, the character of the neighborhood and the character of the future plans for the neighborhood, so. Let me have some disagreement on that, but.
Well, then can we, uh, fashion our motion to include the paragraph that you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
That's in our standard ordinance.
Yeah.
If it is, yeah, and then.
I, I have a motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Tassier.
I find that case, uh, two oh three, twenty twenty-four fits all standards for approval. I move that we approve case two oh three dash twenty twenty-four with final construction plans , um, reviewed by our township engineer and all federal, state and local ordinances be followed before occupancy.
Support. O'Connor.
Full call, O'Connor?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Clary?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Tassier?
Yes.
Representative, and Ms. Sopra.
No. Motion carries. And if anyone wants to know why my no vote, in case it's not evident, I think that there should be more landscaping. And perhaps Mr. Cruz will consider that in order to, um, uh, best promote his development and encourage other people and encourage a more acclaim for his own development by showing how beautiful it can be on a former air force space.
We will share the desire with the Cruzes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next up. Okay, now we, uh, now that we've handled all of the new business, we move to the report of the zoning board of appeal.
No meetings.
Okay, thank you. Report of the township board, representative, Mr. Tassier.
Yes, um, April the eighth, the, uh, board approved the, uh, uh, police mobile radio purchase. We also approved the, uh, uh, refuge, um, uh, with Travis sanitation for the dates of June eighth and September fourteenth. For the, uh, um, refuge pickup or drop off at Travis.
Oh, what was that phrase one again?
On June the eighth.
Okay.
And September fourteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Those who get your applications at the, uh, treasurer's office. Uh, the April twenty-second meeting, we approved, uh, sending out an RFP for water and sewer contract operations. Um, sending out an RFP for water leak detention requests. Um, approved paying invoices for, um, engineering services. Approved paying invoices for the phase six water main project. Approved creation of the new community development director position. Approved the purchase of a new ADA kayak launcher at Van Etten Lake. Approved our request to amend zoning of the one sixty-five ordinance, article six. That was something that we sent to them. They approved it for the, um, that's the recreational marijuana. Approved the resolution for twenty twenty-four, uh, dash twelve for, um, marijuana facilities fee schedule. Uh, approved the job classic, reclassification for request for police chief for an employed, for an employee, uh, with a pay raise. It was reclassification of an employee's position. Um, approved the weed contract for Van Etten Lake and approved pay increase for parks and rec director with a bonus incentive, uh, program included.
Thank you. Next would be the planning commission subcommittees. Ordinance Subcommittee has not met and the master plan Subcommittee has yet met? No, okay. Um, the report of the economic, and then the committee of the whole, we're meeting, do we have that on the calendar? The planning commission Subcommittee or that was committee of the whole? Is that on for the twenty-second of May?
The twenty-second, um, we have our maps training from ten AM to four thirty PM. And in the evening, this whole Subcommittee is gonna meet for Lewis Pavilion. Um, the objective goal is to explore a location.
Thank you.
Where they're current or.
Thank you. Report of the EIC.
The EIC had three meetings, April fourth, April eleventh and May second of this year. Uh, the Oscoda Township Board of Trustees approved the facade grant language at their meeting in April, paving the way for applications to be accepted. The corridor improvement authority concept was forwarded to the Oscoda Board of Trustees for approval. The Board of Trustees returned favorable approval to continue with the creation of corridor improvement authority. Art and placement, art, I never get that right.
Placemaking.
Art. I have been reading, just can't read it. Art and placemaking announced the take flight art contest for twenty twenty-four. We had, uh, a nice visit from Develop Iosco, who presented the program for this year and how they were doing. Uh, it was the same review, if you saw, at the Oscoda Board of Township. Match on main applications by Pam Lovelace, I'm sorry, Pamela Lovelace and Teresa Edelman were accepted and forwarded to the Board of Trustee for approval to the MEDC. Four facade grant proposals were considered and forwarded also to the Oscoda Township Board of Trustee for their approval.
Do you have the, those who have the facade applications in? Do you know those?
Yes, Can Do Roofing,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Truly Yours,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Landmark Title and Miles Insurance. The one for, uh, PKT was, uh, returned for modifications of their grant.
PKL.
I'm sorry.
No worries. That was the match on main, right? Or is that a facade?
No.
That's facade.
This is for the facade grant.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh, EIC?
No.
Okay, comments from the planning commission members? Mr. Tassier?
Nope.
Mr. Clary?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
You're all set, thank you.
Okay. Bye. I, my comment is, everybody please vote tomorrow. It's, um, millage for the schools. And Mr. Buckner, report of the zoning director.
I've still had. Um, we have training coming up. We got some more people from over the township, quite a few of us. That's it. Thanks, Bob.
Usually we have people from Mycato, so Alconocami, no?
No. Fifty different jurisdictions I emailed out. One of the five.
Oh. Yeah, that's crazy. Okay, well, um, no further business. To come before the commission, I declare us adjourned at seven oh two.